Great. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, October 24th, 2022 Schoolborn Meeting. I'd like to call it to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Arndt.
Here.
Felton.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Roche.
Here.
Directors Weber and Oliver Diop, absent Chair Diaz.
Here.
That's five present at six o'clock.
Great. We could stand, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. We will do approval of our meeting agenda and minutes, and I'm looking for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for tonight, October 24th, as well as our regular meeting minutes for the Committee of the Whole and the regular meeting minutes for October 10th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Now, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And oppose? That motion carries. Moving on to our Quality in Action Report. Equity and Learning Director, Dr. Chad Schmidt, has some great staff here along with him.
Yes, I do, Chair Diaz. Thank you. So, good evening, Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Zambrino, and members of the South St. Paul community. It is my pleasure as the Director of Equity and Learning to be with you here tonight with a team of exceptional leaders that I have. They'll be coming up here shortly, as they said they would not leave me up here by myself.[108.97][108.99](laughter) These leaders, they have a deep well of knowledge about the IB programs and the standards and practices that undergird our IB programs. They've put in a tremendous amount of work over the last 12 months especially around a self-study that they've done, gathering documents, setting up stakeholder input, and then they've helped facilitate and coordinate the site visit that we had of evaluators this past week. As you know, our mission statement is to ignite a passion in every learner, to inquire, continuously improve, and engage in positively changing our world. That is what is the core of IB programs. It is about inquiring into the effectiveness of the programs. It is about striving for continuous improvement, and it is about making positive changes. And so, the outcomes of this evaluation, the year-long self-study and the evaluation, lead us towards those spaces of trying to live out our mission. So, we have three IB programs in the district. The Primary Years Program is at both of our two elementary schools, the Middle Years Program and the Diploma highlights that they found in their study. Our Middle Years Program Coordinator is Melissa Miller. She's here behind me. And then, the Diploma Program Coordinator is Conrad Anderson. Again, you'll hear from each of them about some of the highlights from the evaluation site visit and some opportunities for growth and development. So with that, I'm going to pass the mic off to Kim Laskoff.
Good evening. I have to stand on my tippy toes here. So, overall, our site visit was very positive. Teachers and students were very excited with the outcomes and how receptive the visitors were in our building. So, it was a positive, caring, and respectful environment was the overarching theme that they gave us. Also, the feedback was that we had wonderful, flexible, functional learning spaces. They got to see our indoor and outdoor spaces, both in our school tour and when we did the live visits. I walked around with my phone, and they got to see learning in action in our outdoor spaces. Another theme was the shared collaboration with staff and our specialist teachers and our support staff, and then the extensive support for students and families that we have, both in and out of school. They were very impressed with that. Areas for development would be IB PYP training for all staff. They really encouraged ongoing upscaling of training, increased focus on conceptual learning, stakeholder involvement in policy updates, and then cohesive IB PYP language and communication for students, parents, and families. So, with that, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you. So, our visit was also very positive. The team that we had really had celebrations that they wanted to talk about. They were very impressed with what a strong sense of community that the building had, that they could tell. I was a little surprised with the remote visit, how they could pick up on so much, and they really were pleased with the strong sense of community. They said we had very passionate educators, and they got to, I believe we went, I walked with that selfie stick into almost every single classroom, and they really saw some good things that they liked. They loved the inclusion program. I explained that we have the Deaf, Hard of Hearing, the DHH program housed within our building, and it's not technically part of the PYP, but they were very impressed with the inclusion and that kids were learning sign language. They went to, one of the classrooms we went into, a counselor was giving a lesson, and there was an interpreter there, so she was signing, and they were very impressed with our inclusive program and the collaboration. They saw several lessons, and it wasn't planned, it was just happening, where teachers had included the attributes of the learner profile, and they were doing it in a very authentic way, and so they were pleased to see that common language that was going on. And again, they loved the building. They just were raving about the size of the classrooms. They could not believe how much space there was, so they were quite pleased with that. The opportunities for development during the self-study, we identified what we thought we needed to continue to work on and develop, and they agreed with them, and then they added a couple other ones. But a couple, before the pandemic, district-wide, we were doing approaches to learning, the ATL skills, and they agreed that they would like us to continue working on that. To work on inquiry, moving from more, right now, it's fairly teacher-led. They wanted to move more to student-led. The build team decided that we really, after the pandemic, wanted to work on the social-emotional skills, and there's a student support part of IB that they were absolutely in favor of. And then, action. Now, it's teaching kids, now that I've learned this, what am I going to do with this learning? And the big part of action is that they're taking their learning and realizing that it's not just in a classroom, that it's in life outside of school also. And then, the two that they added is the communications with families. They would like us to try and think a little bit outside of the box, because right now, we have newsletters, and there's stuff in the newsletters. When they met with parents, a lot of parents couldn't remember that, and so, they are suggesting that we figure out some additional ways to communicate with families. And then, the policies, they said, are very district-driven, and they would like us to form a committee or form some type of group to make the district policies specific to Lincoln Center, so that it feels more like Lincoln. But overall, it was a great visit, and I'm passing it off to Melissa Miller and Conrad Anderson.
Good evening. I just want to say a couple things about the whole evaluation process. It was really unique getting, doing the remote visit. I wasn't quite sure how it was going to work, but we ended up having four IB educators, one from Qatar, one from Beirut, one from Argentina, and one from Ohio. And so, and we get all these different eyes looking at our program to, you know, give us, tell us what we're doing right, commendations for what we're doing right, and also those areas for growth. And we really are able to look at the IB program standards and practices and see what we are doing in our building and what we can improve on. And these are all just best practices for education. And so, it's a good thing that we get outside eyes kind of looking at what we're doing and give us a unique perspective on that. As far as, and we did something unique this year. We usually have separate visits for MYP and the Diploma Program. We did a continuum visit this year, which meant that they were, basically all four were looking at elements of our entire building, six through 12, and then they also had separate meetings for MYP and DP-specific issues during the time. So, some of the strengths, which are very similar to the strengths in our other buildings, they love the collaborative nature of our staff. They also are, were really impressed with our efforts to address the social-emotional needs of our students. They were, they questioned us for a while about Win Wednesday and what we're doing there, and really thought it was a unique idea and how we were, what we were doing to help students, especially coming out of the pandemic. They noticed everywhere caring and supportive educators, and then finally, really impressed with things like our affinity groups that provide opportunities for students to embrace each other's differences and to share their own identities. And so, they thought that was something that was a definite strength for our building.
And for opportunities for development, our team also noted some of the similar ones that we had noted in our self-study as well, and some additional ones were like Lincoln Center. They want our policies to be integrated into the culture of the school, so right now, they are kind of like a district-level policy that we have, but people aren't living and breathing it and communicating it out to students and families. And then, they also, like Conrad said, that social-emotional learning was a highlight, but they want more of a balance with academic performance, and then more focus on conceptual and inquiry-based teaching. And again, right now, inquiry, very similar to Lincoln, is teacher-driven, but more having it be student-led inquiry and conceptually based. And then, our next steps, all of us will receive a final evaluation report from the IBO in the coming months, and then this will create a pathway for us to reflect on that work and get, put that into our school improvement plans in the near future. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have an observation. It's not just outsiders who are looking at you. We look at you too, and I want to tell you all, keep up the good work, because I'm very impressed, as you may see me wandering around your halls, you know, I do have a badge all the time, just for protection, but keep up sincerely, keep it up. It's, we're going great, and we can keep doing it. So, thanks to all of you, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Wendy?
Yeah, a question for Diane.
Yes?
No, just, I was just curious, when you brought up the Deaf and Hard of Hearing classrooms that, you know, that are at Lincoln Center, and since I am the South St. Paul representative to Intermediate 917, who those, that program belongs to, when you shared it with the IB people, coordinators, was there any other discussion regarding that program, since it is from another district into our buildings, or?
The requirement from IB is if it's a different administration and they're just housed in our building, then we do what we can to collaborate with them. And I, in fact, have been talking with Taylor Thomas, the coordinator, and I'm going to do some training for her staff, because they do have interpreters in the classrooms, and so far, they haven't had much, any training from the IB perspective. So, I'm going to be, we're working together to figure out how to collaborate even more and get her staff so they understand some of the PYP language. And we are doing our morning announcements, the fifth graders do morning announcements, and they have a sign of the week. And then, there's a DHH interpreter who will show the sign a couple of times.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Yeah, it's very fun.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
So, I'm just going to touch base on the policies that you heard. So, the Board is responsible for all of the policies. There are some that are specific to the IB programs. So, assessment, academic integrity, inclusion, and language. And so, part of the feedback we got from the evaluators was how those might be policies in writing. The next step is to make sure they're policies in practice, that those things are deeply embedded into the knowledge and the practices that are going on in schools and classrooms. Does that capture the end outcome of that? So, I wanted to clarify, we're not talking all of the hundreds-plus policies that the Board's responsible for. We're really talking about a small number that are specific to IB programs.
And then, how would you do that? Is that like, become the school mission, the school vision? Like, how do you make it your own for each school?
That's a, that's a really good question. I, as we were going through this, I already had the wheels turning about how, how can we do that? And I think it's a much like what we were doing at the high school, for example, with our cell phone policies in this year. I think it's, we always knew we had a policy, but we didn't know if it was enforced and that sort of thing, but I think it's going to be getting, getting multiple stakeholders together. So, students, maybe some parents, teachers, administration, to work on the policies, get them out to the teachers, make sure that they're uniformly applied, you know. I'm thinking about academic integrity. It seems like at the high school, we, you know, we have a lot, you know, I think all teachers are really concerned about it, but we all have kind of different policies and the way we do things, but I think if it was more uniform and the students understood that, that would lead to a better, better learning process with that. So, so there's ways we can do it, but that's part of what our next steps will have to be, is like, what, how can we do that and drive it? So, it's something that the whole, whole building or the whole district is working on.
Yeah. So, that was in the, I'm thinking of the middle school had their, their own handbook, and so maybe things like that, so that parents
For sure.
can be notified as well as
Right.
the staff. Great.
We, as a board, we're also talking about trainings and things tonight, and we also heard about training when Linda and I sat in. So, what are some of the training needs and support that our district needs to be doing right now? Or what, some of those things, if you could speak to that?
Yeah. So, I'll start it out, and then ask for the coordinators to come in and pick up some more details for it. So, there's different expectations around training across the three programs. So, the Diploma Program requirements around training are more about the courses that a specific teacher might be teaching in the Diploma Program. And then, in the MYP Program of the eight subject areas, we need to make sure that we've got every, we've got a couple of experts trained in the six, eight grade level space and in the nine, 10 grade level space in each of those subject areas. And then, in the PYP, there's a broad training, and then there's depth of training in pieces of the PYP program. And so, by way of example, John, this summer, we hosted a IB workshop on the inquiry
Investigating.
investigating inquiry, thank you. And so, we invited our elementary teachers to participate in that training, and we, not everybody participated, but we did get a good number there, and that gave them a chance to dive deep into a little bit of what you saw in this evaluation report about how do we help move inquiry from teacher-led to student-led. So, so those are some of those pieces. The other, the other thing I'll say before I hand over the mic is, these folks are IB, a part of the IB Educator Network. So, they actually can deliver trainings in other schools. They have the kind of expertise that they can deliver it in-house, and IB requires IB-certified training. So, we need to also be able to tap in experts from around the IB network to come in and help provide some of that training, too.
I was just going to say, the PYP training is, it was two and a half days this summer, and that's a typical. And what I found out recently during this visit is they now have virtual, which are remote visits, but it's two and a half days all at the same time, and they have online, which you're given 30 days to complete. So, they've added some different varieties of trainings.
Yeah, and I'll just add, too, that we, as coordinators, meet a couple times a month. We were meeting once a week to start, start the year, and we, these are discussions that we have all the time with Dr. Schmidt about what training needs we have. He has the budget and the purse strings, and so we're pulling on him, but he, it's something that we've been working on, is the collaborative nature, is making sure that we have the training needs that we are required to have.
Okay.
Yeah, and to piggyback off of John's comment, along with training conversations, we've been talking about the responsibility of the Board. And so, John and I met as Chair and Vice Chair with those same evaluators. We loved the international piece of it, too. It was just so amazing. There was somebody from Portugal, and where, where was Husia from? I don't remember either. Anyways, it was, it was really amazing to have folks come in and hear about your program, but I think it's so important for us as Board members to make sure that we're reading the newsletters from each school. One of the things they asked is something that we ask in every Board meeting, is where do we see a passion? So, you know, having our Quality in Action reports come from the kids themselves, from the teachers who are doing the work. I mean, it was, so it was just, you know, I was thinking about how we are also a part of that evaluation and what our responsibility is. So, just a reminder to all of us about what we need to do to make sure that we're participating along with the coordinators and all the teachers who are doing their work.
Great. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Whoo, moving on to public listening session submissions. There were none this week. I'll hand it over to Director Roche to talk about the items that we talked about in the Committee of the Whole meeting.
Sure. All right. Prior to our Board meetings, we have our Committee of the Whole meeting, where we do much of our Board work. We were discussing Board roles and the sort of dated term of inspector, and just sort of updating some of the discussions, and then a lot of discussion around things we're going to hear about later today, about our bond rating and elements of that. That was much of our Board work tonight.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Zambrino?
All right. Thank you so much for another opportunity to speak about all the great things going on in the district. First, I'll highlight here is, hopefully, everyone received their copy of the six times in your mailbox. As always, our team did an amazing job. I always like to make the point that everything you see in South St. Paul, by the district, it's created here. It's our team, it's Danette, it's whoever else is contributing, and so they always do a great job. I love that it's pictures of our kids front and center, and Sir Loine, I'm not sure who's in there, but we did have some conversation this, today at Cabinet about maybe having a Cabinet member who may be in the room here right now, putting that on here sometime soon, so.
But it's, we love to share the information, lots of important information. I'll talk a little bit more about our referendum and what's on the ballot, but it's a great source of information and way to just see what's going on in the district. So, kudos to our team for that. Want to make sure that everyone's aware that on Monday, November 7th, we have a first, our first Flex Learning Day of the year. So, as a Board, if you'll recall in the spring, we talked about giving an opportunity for trying some things different to create a couple Flex Learning Days that'll affect students in pre-kindergarten through eighth grade. So, our elementary and middle school students will have the opportunity to continue learning from home while then giving our teachers some time to connect with families and kids in the morning, and then do the, the Connection Day, our parent-teacher conference time in the afternoon and early evening. So, giving that a roll here this fall. We'll have another one later in the spring. Had spoken a little bit about our Central Square offerings, and another highlight of the district, all the things happening at Central Square. So, want to make sure folks are aware that there are some fitness classes. Registration's open now, and will be open through the beginning of the sessions on November 1st. There's classes in cardio, strength, and aquatics, as well as classes tailored to 55-plus. So, if you want to learn about those, please go to our Community Ed website. Want to keep our community active and healthy, and engage in our, Community Center is a great way to do that. Also, through community education, want to make sure people are aware that there are free meals available. So, we have a partnership with Minnesota Central Kitchen, which is an initiative of Second Harvest Heartland, and anybody who lives in South St. Paul can come on every Monday, anytime after 3:00 PM, and pick up a free meal. And so, the meals are just, are prepared by professional chefs or cooks, and list all the ingredients, so you don't have to worry about any allergens or any issues there. They come in single serving or family servings. For families of four, they're available first come, first serve, and then available again on Mondays after 3:00 at Central Square. Always fun to know what's going on with our theater program. So, I haven't seen as many productions as a lot of those in the room, or maybe listened to this meeting, but from what I've seen, everyone is fantastic. So, we have a fall musical coming up with The Little Shop of Horrors. So, November 11th through 13th, that'll be playing at our secondary building at the High School Auditorium. Tickets are available online with, at the high school. You can click on the high school website and look for athletics and activities, or follow that link on the screen, but I'm looking forward to seeing the show. Mentioned just a moment ago, again, really big levy, ballot initiative this year. We have our operating levy, or what I like to make sure people understand, is a learning levy on the ballot this fall. We have two questions. There's, first question is really thinking about it as stabilizing what we have. We are facing a very significant budget shortfall, as many districts are, and looking to shore that up and asking our local taxpayers to support that. If question one passes, again, it's a complete investment right back in our students. It's a learning levy, covers our classroom teachers, our support staff program, all for the kids. Question one will really stabilize the district. Question two, then, will allow us to look at expanding some of the opportunities. We talked about the performing arts a moment ago with our, our musical coming up. We've heard a lot from the community about wanting to see more opportunities for kids engaging in performing arts. We've, I've heard a lot directly about, you know, this is this really great hard work in town. We'd love to see more opportunities for kids to hands-on learning to prepare them for career, looking at potentially bringing in more opportunities for college-bearing classes into our high schools, so that students, while they're with us, and not having to pay for the classes on their own dime, or their parents being able to access more college-bearing credits. So, that would be some of what we could look at doing with the second question. Really, really important for people to know, question one has to pass for question two to pass. So, if you vote yes on question one, then you can vote yes on question two. Saying no on question one is the same as saying no on both questions. So, just want to make sure people know that. Also, we've learned that on the ballot, question one is on the front side. I understand it's on the bottom of the ballot, and then, if you flip the ballot, there's a lot more on the back, important things like school board race that I'll talk about in a moment, and that second question is there. So, those are the two questions there. Tons of information on our website, and if you don't find what you're looking for, you can, right there, click on the email to submit a question, and we're happy to answer questions. We've had a little slowing down, so hopefully, that means that people have gotten their questions asked, but available to answer questions right up till November 8th. So, please jump in and look at the information and ask any questions you may have. And I did just mention as well, on the ballot, we have four open seats for our school board. We have 22 highly engaged residents who have put their names in for that, as candidates, so excited to see how that goes. The League of Women Voters did record sessions with candidates who are interested in participating in that, and that can be found on their website at LWV Dakota County, leagueofwomenvotersdakota county.org, and you can watch those videos. Also, tons of information on the candidates linked on our website. Well, in an election season, why not have more signs out and about in the community? So, we did put together a new Packer Pride sign this fall. We've had such a great start to the school year. It's been so positive in our buildings, and so thought, why not just capitalize on that? I really appreciate our partners at the Educational Foundation covering the cost of those signs. It's not costing the district anything, and they're available at all of our schools, as well as at the district office. We were asking for a $5 donation to, back to the Educational Foundation, but certainly not a requirement. And hopefully, people will get those and enjoy those, like this great picture of these kids here in front of the sign. Ask them, take a picture with the sign and post it on social media, so we can share that out and, and see that pride throughout the community. Some things that have recently happened, I had the fun privilege, that's a picture that Danette Childs took on top of Capoja. I was trying to get my drone to work, so I went up there with her. Unfortunately, I think the drone sensed that it was as high as it was going to go, so we didn't get to go any higher, although I don't know that the picture would have been any better than that if we'd have been up any higher. So, last week on Wednesday was Unity Day. Staff throughout the entire district dressed in orange. That's a national symbol that we've asked across the country to come to schools, come to, go out in your community wearing orange, to show a sign of unity, and then to speak out against bullying and sharing that bullying is just not acceptable in our community. And I got to give Mr. Breetoy and his teachers and team kudos, because standing up there thinking, I'm glad I'm not down on that field trying to organize hundreds of kids and staff into a near-perfect heart, and I don't think it could be any more perfect, since it was made up of our kids. So, fun event there. Our CLC students had a great field trip opportunity. They went to the Arboretum, and when they were out there, they had a photo contest, and so they broke them into the different areas of Arboretum to take pictures of the Japanese Garden, the Perennial Garden, the Conservatory, and Rose Garden, and then students were selected who had the best picture in each one of those categories, and then those pictures were posted on social media for a vote. So, this is our winner, Zariah, looking very proud of the picture she took. And it's hard to see in this little image here, but it's an amazing picture, and what a great place for them to go and, and just do some hands-on learning and get out and apply their artistic creative skills.
They were all great.
Yeah, I voted for her, too.
Did you?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's amazing that, and I, I love to take pictures. I don't have that artistic eye, but so this, the way that you, the kids could see the world through those lenses was great. Another exciting thing that's gone on, students in Mrs. Derry Berry's class at Lincoln were working on, well, we Berry's class at Lincoln were working on what we call in educational, often here's the term, growth mindset. So, thinking about our intelligence is not fixed, it's something we grow. And so, that's, I was really excited to see this coming through here because one of the messages I'll always have people understand is it's, you're not smart or dumb. There's no such thing as that. Intelligence is not fixed, it's malleable, it can change. And the way it changes is by applying, I always said to my students, think of your brain like a muscle. Work it hard and it'll get stronger. And there's research that proves that. I won't bore everybody with that. But I'd love to see what they're doing. They're challenging kids to say, it's okay to do hard things. Struggle, we call that productive struggle. And so, with the kids at the youngest age there in kindergarten to say, doing hard things will make your brain stronger. So, I'd love to see that, that project going on there. Our Capoja Kindergartners, it was on the other side down, had a fun trip, nature center field trip to Carpenter Nature Center, getting out in nature. And they got to sample apples and learn about the process of making apple cider. Very appropriate in a state like Minnesota where apples are such an important part of our fall. Spoke a little bit about this at our last meeting, but we've just come in on the heels of Hispanic Heritage Month and wanted to highlight another project. So, here you see students in our high school Hispanic Heritage class, and they're working on a project. If you can see, there's two flags there. One is the US flag. And then, the other one is asking them to, to draw an image of the flag of their, what they identify from their Latino heritage or their Hispanic heritage. And then, the students were also identifying things that make up their identity. So, this, what's so great about our, our community is this multiculturalism we have. We've heard about our IB program and part of being an IB district is embrace, you know, international-mindedness. But we have that also right, right here in our own backyard. And so, nice to see that the, the cultures, that dual identity, dual culture of our students being elevated at our high school. Capoja Warriors, so our, our gym at the, at Capoja Education was turned into a Ninja Warrior Gym. So, kids had the opportunity in all grades to go into the gym throughout the month and do activities like rock wall climbing, swinging on ropes, and even a warped wall. So, if anyone's seen that, that's the wall you have to run up to get to the top. I'm always envious of the strength of these little ones. And whenever they're doing these things, I'm like, I can't, I don't think I could climb very high on, on one of those walls with my strength at this point. But you can see the pride of this youngster climbing the wall and, and giving us a thumbs up. And then, another one back at our high school. So, ninth graders are working on something called Keys to Success. So, what they're having them do is identify goals and then setting their, their goals as, on these keys, writing them down as keys to success. And so, they're in the third floor Individuals and Societies hallway. And, and again, these are what they're going to commit to this year to help them be successful. And I love that. Again, we talked about the brain development, but also the importance of goals and, and how if you don't know where you're going, you don't really have anything to aspire to. So, love that they're starting with our, our youngest learners in our high school to set goals and really aim high for their success this year. Our board should recognize this one. We had a great Oktoberfest celebration at Central Square. It was hosted by the school board. We had brats and snacks and we had, I, I don't remember what the final count was. Does anyone remember how many brats were served? I think it was like 80 or more?
Well, I think we had bought 100.
We bought 100 and they were, they were flying. So, really great attendance by our seniors. I love the engagement of our seniors at our, at our community center at Central Square. The next social's coming up on November 17th with Wild Rice Soup. And is that the fashion show or is that a separate one? There's also a fashion show.
Well, I'll be discussing that shortly.
Alright, we'll save that one for, for Director Felton's update.
As I am a model.
As always, you can follow us on social media and whatever format you like. We really work hard to kick out information about all the great things going on. So, you can certainly find us on social media. And then, some update, or some more important up, important dates. Let me see if I can speak here today. I'm working on it. Again, we talked about the flex learning on November 7th. So, making sure families know the kids will stay home. And then, hopefully, they're getting connected with the schools for that important family connections, really the heart of what that's about. November 8th, there's no school for the election day. Our buildings will have elections going on. And so, just to keep those pieces separate, there's no school going on that day. And then, we have a holiday coming up. So, there's no school November 23rd through 25th. It's a few days away in November. As always, our meeting materials are available on our website. And you can find past meetings to view if you want to see those or past materials. Just go to ssbps.org and find school board link.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, October felt busy, didn't it?
It was a lot.
Yeah, so much happening.
Fun month.
Yeah, it is a fun month. Moving on to our consent items. So, consent items are items that come through each meeting that we don't need much discussion about. This includes bills payable, claims, and our staffing report. Do you have a motion for the approval of our consent items?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Appreciate it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. On the agenda, it says policy review, but we have no policies for review this week. So, that moves us on to our business items. Very exciting. Alright, we are looking for the school board to approve the resolution ratifying the issuance and sale of general obligations, school building refunding bonds, series 22A, 2022A, in the original aggregate principal amount of 9,365.
Nine million.
Nine million. There's extra zeros. Nine million, 365,000 dollars. Fixing their form and specifications directing their execution and delivery, providing for their payment, providing for the escrowing, escrowing and investment of the proceeds thereof, and provide, providing for the refunding of bonds refunded thereby. Do you have a motion to move this resolution for approval?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And we do have discussion today from Matt from Ellers.
Yes. Thank you, Board Chair Diaz, members of the board, Superintendent Zambreno. My name is Matthew Hammer, and I'm part of the financial advisory team from Ellers that works with South St. Paul School District. And we do have some really good news on the district's refunding bonds that were sold last Wednesday. So, similar to refinancing a mortgage, school districts can refinance their outstanding debt to save money for taxpayers. And that's the only thing that can happen with the, with the savings that's a result of a refunding. If we go back a year ago, well, let's go way back first. Let's go back to 2013. The district originally issued a little bit, almost $27 million worth of bonds that were authorized in an election in 2013. And last fall, the school district was able to take advantage of really low interest rates that were available to municipal issuers at that time and saved about 1.8 million dollars off of the original issue. So, there was two issues that were done as part of that authorization. About 17 million dollars was issued initially that had a call date of February 1 of '22. And the district saved 1.8 million dollars on that issue last fall. Subsequently, there was a second issue for about 10 million dollars that had a call date of February 1 of '23. And we were able to leverage that savings that was obtained during the original issue last fall and then shorten the issue in essence, as well as take advantage of still pretty low interest rates that we have and save another 660,000 dollars. So, in total, taxpayers are going to see about 2.5 million dollars of savings from that original issue back in 2013, which is really good news. We did receive nine bids, so we hit the market pretty good last week. The low bidder was Baird out of New Jersey. And because we were able to meet that parameter, we originally had a 4.3% parameter put in as part of the original issuance resolution in September. We ended up with a 3.6% interest rate or 3.5, 6% interest rates. We were well underneath that with a decent premium as part of the sale, which allowed us to save about 660,000 when we were anticipating about 370,000. So, about double what we were initially anticipating. As part of the issue, the district did receive a new underlying rating. So, the district's current underlying rating is double A minus with a negative outlook. That was affirmed by S&amp;P. So, as part of the, the issuance process, districts, underwriters that are bidding on the bonds like to have a third-party, in your guys' case, it's S&amp;P, look at the district and, and give a, a third-party look, similar to like your audit that you receive every year. As part of that process, they assigned, they affirmed the district's rating, but they did uphold the negative outlook with one of the caveats being that they'll mention in the rating report is that they're interested in seeing the, how the November election turns out next month. And that'll be a key driver in kind of the financial health of the district as you guys move forward, which will be an important piece to monitor. And then, as part of that process, they'll be back to take another look at the district's rating as you move forward as part of that process and see what they'll do with that double A minus rating, which is a really good rating for a district your size. But you would fall into a, a single A category if that would get adjusted moving forward. So, with that, the district does have a resolution that was read. The Chair Diaz and Dr. Zambreno awarded the bonds last Wednesday because we met that parameter that was in place. So, this resolution ratifies or basically puts in stone the award of those bonds that were received last Wednesday. And I can answer any questions folks have.
Any questions? We had a, we had a healthy discussion, I think, during the committee of the whole meeting. So, are we ready? Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Arndt.
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
That's five aces.
And that motion carries.
Yeah. As always, thank you for the opportunity. And we'll, we'll hope everything goes well here in November.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You did work on this.
Sure, Diaz, if I may, just for a moment, you know, I just, we've sure been talking a lot about finances and some pretty complex stuff. So, I thank you, Matt, for, for that presentation. And, you know, really appreciate the partnership with Ellers. I, we had a brief finance update this evening about our own team and the great work they do. And of course, that partnership is, is really essential to watching out for us to look for that opportunity. He did mention our rating and that opportunity this fall. If, if the operator levy passes, that puts us in a better standing to have even better rating, which allows us to do even better work with the finances of our taxpayers. But just want to make sure people really heard that. We've been working super hard on this end to get savings back to our taxpayers. So, when we talk about this, the savings, it's not coming back to the school district, it is going back to our taxpayers, as Matt was saying. So, last year, 1.8 million. This year, almost another 700,000. So, almost 2.5 million dollars of savings for taxpayers in South St. Paul. So, while we are out this fall with an ask to get some resources back into the school district, we're also actively in this board and, and administration, working super hard to save our taxpayers every penny and dollar we can. And so, just hoping everyone caught that and then knows how hard we're, we're working with that as we take such great responsibility, being good stewards of, of our taxpayer dollars.
Absolutely. Thanks for pointing it out again. Alright, and the last thing on our agenda is board members' reports. Wendy, why don't you start?
Okay. Just looking forward to several events that are, that are coming up. The first thing I want to talk about, which I have mentioned several times at the board meetings, coming up two weeks from Wednesday, would be on Wednesday, November 9th. As I am the board representative to our Educational Foundation, it will be our Education Foundation Gala, which is our annual celebration fundraiser, which will be held at Southview Country Club. Tickets can be purchased at the Educational Foundation, which is located on Maria Avenue. And it, it is a very nice, fun event with a buffet dinner. And, and also, as a part of the fundraiser, there is a live auction and a very nice generous silent auction. So, it is something that you can look forward to. It is a very fun event. So, we appreciate people supporting the Educational Foundation and coming to Southview Country Club. As our honorees for this week, coming up in, well, in two weeks, I mean, I'm sorry, our former superintendent, Dr. Dave Webb, and our former director, Carrie Boivich, will be our honorees for this year. So, it will be a very, very special event for, for our, our, our district and our town. And the other thing that I will be doing personally, which I also serve as a member of the Board of Directors on the South St. Paul Senior Center, we hold our meetings at Central Square, as Dr. Zambreno had briefly mentioned. This Wednesday is our, is our fall Senior Center Fashion Show, which is, starts at 11:00 and goes to approximately 1:00. And it is a, it's a very, very fun event. And I am a model there also. I've been a, doing the modeling for the last several years. And if you're interested, it is a catered luncheon by Magnolia's Restaurant. The cost is $17 per person to pay for, pay for the dinner from Magnolia's. And it's going to be a chicken dinner this year. So, it'll, it's, it's a very nice, relaxing, enjoyable event. And the other thing that looking forward to, which I have done for almost 20 years, is next Monday is Halloween, October 31st. As pretty much everybody knows, the city of South St. Paul holds a Halloween event from 5:00 until 7:00 PM on Maria Avenue. The, the street is blocked off from 7th Avenue down to at least 5th or 4th Avenue, depending on, on how big of volunteer groups we have. So, we look forward to seeing plenty of families, students, adults. It's just really, really wonderful. And the school board, we also have a table where we, we give out treats. And if anyone has in questions regarding the levies, we could have information for that to share. So, please, you can stop by and visit us. Our table will be located in front of the Educational Foundation. So, we look forward to seeing you on Halloween, but from 5:00 until 7:00. As far as I know, the weather actually, it sounds like it's going to be pretty good. It should be right around 50 degrees is what's being predicted so far. So, we look forward to seeing you on Halloween. Thank you.
Alright, Director Walker.
I have nothing tonight, other than to remind people to take advantage of all the information out on the school website regarding the referendum, everything that you need to know about why we're doing it and what the money will be used for is out there. So, I encourage you to do that. And then, also look at the, the profiles of the 22 school board candidates. We also mentioned the League of Women Voters site that have YouTube videos from some of the, the candidates too. So, encourage you to seek both of those out and make sure that you're, you're getting all the information you need to make your choices on the 8th. So, that's all.
Great reminder, be informed voters. Bill?
I just want to encourage everybody to get out and vote and to support our kids. And I guess I'm allowed to say that I encourage everybody to vote yes on both referendums. And that's it.
John?
Alright. Looking forward to Little Shop of Horrors. But having the IB crew in here tonight, I am still fascinated by the stories I get to hear at home around the dining room table about kind of interesting activities our kids are doing in the school. Got to hear about romantic poems being written while they were out and about exploring nature, but also the French class that was doing some live chats with high schools and speaking French and English. And I'm always fascinated by what our teachers are getting to do with our kids. So, I thank them for that. And that's it for tonight.
Thank you. So, that's it for tonight's agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Monday, October 24th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion? That motion carries. And the meeting is adjourned at 6:49 PM. Thanks, everyone.